Fades. Color guard, post.
Present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for bringing us together. We ask your blessings upon this proceeding this morning. We also ask your blessings upon the men and women who make the Allstate Center happen. We ask your blessings upon the administrators, the faculty members, the students, who have dedicated their lives to public service and to the safety of others. Please always guide them and put your hand of protection over them at all times. Lord, we also ask your blessings upon our community, our country, our state. Please help us as we go about the business of this day. Give us the guidance that we need to do your will. And we thank you for the many blessings you have given us. We asked all this through thy holy name. Amen.
Right, right face. Bow from left forward, march.
Mr. Brock, who do we get to thank for that fabulous presentation this morning?
A colleague. It's kind of the norm for police recruit class. I'll share a little information in my colleagues.
Very good. Thank you. It was very nice, very nice. Thank you. Good morning. Welcome to one and all who are with us this morning. We appreciate your presence. We do not have any retirement resolutions this morning. However, we do have a presentation by the St. Petersburg Museum of History. If I could ask for those good folks to step forward, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. How are you all doing? I'm Scott Maxim, and I just want to do two introductions here. This is Cadet Thomas. He is a St. Petersburg College, going to be a May graduate and be commissioned as its Army's Second Lieutenant in the United States Army, active duty. His first duty station is Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri. And also on to my right hand is Mr. Joe Cohen. He is the Executive Director for the St. Pete Museum of History, and he obviously a few words. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us this morning. First of all, we're here to present to St. Petersburg College a historic print of the F-4U Corsair fighter. This print was done by Stan Stokes. It is signed and numbered, and the original hangs in the Pentagon. There were 112 of these planes built during World War II. You want to unveil it so they can see what it looks like? There were 112 of these planes built, and it was the main fighter in World War II. It was, had a good kill ratio, and they said it's the best plane that was in World War II. There's still a few of these available for historic flights and things like that. But we hope the college will put this to good use, and I understand it's going to move from campus to campus, and it might start in Dr. Law's office to begin with. But here's your, here's a gift from the Museum of History. I would like to say a few words about the Museum of History before I leave, though. I mean, the Museum of History is celebrating its 90th birthday this year. It's on the pier approach. If you haven't been lately, you should come. It's a wonderful place. We would also like to see St. Pete College use it as a resource. I mean, if you're using, need it for historical study, if you need to look in archives or anything about St. Pete or Pinellas County, it's the place to come, and we hope you come to the museum. The other thing about the museum is there's a wonderful World War II poster exhibit that's on display right now. We have 200 World War II posters. I call them propaganda posters, but they were used to sell the war during World War II. This is incredible display of what we use to get people interested in the World War II, so come see that. And on May the 5th, we're turning the museum into a USO canteen. So to celebrate the period during the 40s, we're going to have big band music and swing dancing and pretend like we're living in the 40s when the war was going on and we were raising money for the war. So if you have nothing to do on the evening of May 5th, come to the museum and take a look. But thanks for having us. Enjoy the print and good luck. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that very, very kind gesture. And to Cadet Thomas, congratulations to you, sir, and thank you for the honor that you bring to this college in serving our country. We appreciate your presence this morning. Thank you.
We brought a visitor guide, too, so pick it up on your way out.
Beautiful. Dr. Tony Smith.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
Dean Campbell and I wanted to have the opportunity for you to meet and recognize SPC's latest instructional rock star, Dr. Tony Smith, Professor Tony Smith. You may have seen in the St. Pete Times, there was two articles. The most recent one, large headline, "SPC College Professor Gets Prestigious Honor." There was a nice interview on Bay News 9. Channel 8's coming out next week. Dr. Smith was named in a new book, if you've not seen it, by the Princeton Review as one of the 300 best professors in America. There was only 10 in the state of Florida. Tony is the only professor from Tampa Bay to be named to that, in that book. So a few words from Martha, and then we'll hear from Tony.
Thank you. If you ever want to have a great day, go to Tony Smith's speech class. The last time I was in there, he was playing Jeopardy with his students, and it's the very definition of student engagement. I'm sure his students appreciate everything that he does for them to promote their success. And now a few words, not an entire speech, from Tony.
Thanks very much. I want to start by saying I knew I was in the right place when I saw they had Coca-Cola for breakfast. I almost teared up. I thought, I'm in good hands at Allstate. Been waiting eight years to make that joke, so it's kind of fun. Thanks to everybody. I want to thank the college, first of all, and eight years ago for hiring me. It is great to have a job that I really love, a career that I enjoy, and going to work is a joy here. And I think sometimes that gets lost on people, especially in terms of these tough times with the budget and cuts and things like that. And I'm faculty, and faculty, sometimes, they've been known to complain occasionally. And I think sometimes that's par for the course, but it's important, and I really try to stress this overall, to be grateful for what we have. This is a great place to work. St. Pete College is fantastic. I have never, and never will again, work at a place where they're so excited and passionate. They so encourage student learning and focusing on the students, helping them finish what they started. It's just a fantastic, encouraging place to work that gets me fired up every day, and I really appreciate that. And I don't see myself changing in that gratitude, so thanks to that and thanks again. I also would like to thank the board itself, and Dr. Law, and Dr. Oliver, Martha Campbell, Karen Miller, and all of my colleagues and friends at the college, along with the students, for recognizing me for this honor. It was a great honor because it comes from the students, so it's driven by feedback from them. And that's who we're teaching to. That's our target as faculty. So to recognize that they see that, and they were grateful for that from me, it's just a great feeling, and I really appreciate that. And then finally, I have to thank my parents, my family. Mom and dad, I think, did a great job of raising me. They were, they're good folks, really good folks. They're in Ohio. I wish they'd come down here. But they're old. You can't, you can't talk them out of doing what they don't want to do. They're stubborn. But I love them, and I'm glad for what they've done for me, and I'm glad, again, for what the college has done for me. So thank you, SPC, and everybody else. Thanks again.
My comment, and I'm certainly going to open it up to the board, is when I saw the article in the newspaper over the weekend, obviously, I got a really big smile on my face, just to have someone of your incredible talents and gifts with our institution, and as committed as you are, this is one of the many, many great stories about this college. And we are just so proud of you and so thrilled for this great honor that you clearly deserve. And as you said, coming from the students, that probably is the biggest, the biggest plus of all. So many, many congratulations, and thank you. Thank you. Other board members? Anything?
Dr. Smith, I feel I had a preview of this because my daughter was fortunate enough to have you as her speech professor a year ago, and she spoke glowingly of you. And she was excited, also, I cut out the newspaper article and your interview, and she was very excited to read it and felt that obviously added a lot to her. And that was just an example of the many students you've touched. But thank you for the wonderful work you're doing at the Seminole campus. We're proud of our Seminole campus, too. I'll point that out, and the effect you're having on students. Well-deserved honor, and thank you for bringing this recognition to our college. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thanks again for the Coca-Cola. I really appreciate it. Have a great day.
Okay, we are going to move on to Agenda Item 3. No comments from myself, and I will open it up to other board members. Mr. Burke?
Dr. Law and I had a wonderful opportunity this past weekend to attend the Phi Theta Kappa National Conference. And if you recall, a year ago, one of our faculty members is board, and it was this board who nominated him, was Steve Meyer, for the Outstanding Faculty Award that the Trustees Association recognizes. And he won the Southeast Region as the Outstanding Faculty Member, which is the biggest region in the country. And so that was an outstanding thing. And this past weekend at Phi Theta Kappa, Steve received, and I'm not sure if it was the first time they've awarded this. They've created this Lifetime Achievement Award, and they honored two longtime faculty sponsors for Phi Theta Kappa. And Steve Meyer was one of those people honored. And he was honored in two different times during the conference. There was a general session which all the students attended, and it's thousands of people there, the great big screens that you would see at a convention, and that was a very nice presentation there. And then, following that, they had a luncheon for all the faculty advisors, just a small group, it wasn't 900 people, at the luncheon, where he was recognized among his peers and his colleagues who serve as faculty advisors. And I think one of the most interesting part, when they were honoring Steve and brought him on stage and presented him the award, Rod Grisley, who's the Executive Director of Phi Theta Kappa, gave a litany of achievements that the Aiden New Chapter of Phi Theta Kappa, which is the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus Chapter. And he, it was unbelievable listening to the awards which they received. And he mentioned several times that this is the most recognized chapter in the history of Phi Theta Kappa, and that no other chapter has achieved these measurable milestones of the Aiden New Chapter on the St. Pete Gibbs Campus. And during all this time, when they were recognized, Steve Meyer was a faculty advisor. Steve was, it was great that his wife Debbie was there, and Steve just sent Dr. Law and I an email either late last night or early this morning, saying how meaningful it was to have the college board and president be there with him to be recognized in this way. So again, bringing honor to St. Petersburg College. I just wanted to point out that we attended this and thank Dr. Steve Meyer for his wonderful achievement. Dr. Law, did I cover that pretty well?
You did, and I, we're just honored very briefly. I need to recognize your contribution. I mean, I know that you had some family matters that were close to your heart, good stuff, but close to your heart, and you took time out of your schedule. We invested a good part of the weekend for us to be at Nashville and back. So, Mr. Burke, I want to thank you for your commitment.
Great. Thank you, Ken. Mr. North, anything?
No.
Deborah? Okay, on to Agenda Item Number 4. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of March 20th.
So moved, sir.
And a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. On to Agenda Item 5, Month Reports. Mr. Lang, anything from you this morning?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Gardner?
Mr. Chair, I do not have a report.
Thank you. Mr. Brock?
May I ask one question, Mr. Lang? Has the whole construction matter, is that matter being concluded?
I beg your pardon. I didn't hear you, Ken.
I forget the name of the firm. Yeah. Is that, that has been concluded?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Welcome to the Allstate Center.
It was concluded on odd terms, I might add.
Good morning.
Good morning. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you for being our host.
Thank you so much. The Allstate Center is the home to the Southeastern Public Safety Institute, and that's, in essence, a virtual institute that encompasses four major areas. First and primary, of course, are our academic programs, where we have associates and a bachelor or degree that are here and manage under the leadership of Dean Brian Frank. We also have the State Lysenger Academies, post-secondary adult vocation programs, which are the only ones in the college that consist of both the law enforcement corrections and fire academy. And you saw law enforcement class number 181 here present the colors this morning. We also have a large continuing workforce program where we'll serve 8,000 to 10,000 students annually under the leadership of Mr. Terry Byrd, in the form of conferences and seminars. And finally, a large grants and contracts initiatives under the leadership of Ms. Eileen LaHaye that many of you familiar with. We also have the responsibility of coordinating the emergency management plan for the college under the leadership of Mr. Bill Gray, and over the last two or three years have developed a very robust program. And one component of that plan is the Threat Assessment Plan, which I'd like to highlight for you this morning. This was initiated based on recommendations by Governor Charlie Crist's Task Force in 207, and based on Department of Education and US Department of Secret Service guidelines that were set forth after the events at Virginia Tech and other institutions throughout the country. Our plan is set forth in Board of Trustees' rule and can be found on our Emergency Management website and on our SharePoint site in its entirety. It's pretty voluminous. And if you haven't had an opportunity to read through it, I'd urge you to take a look at it. The Threat Assessment Plan itself is managed at the campus level and can be initiated by any faculty, staff, or student when there is behavior or actions that cause concern. Recent data indicates that more than 10% of cases nationwide are by people who are not members of the college family, outside sources. So we must be diligent, not only dealing with our own students, faculty, and staff, but also those who might come onto campus. A diverse team of campus leaders have been trained under the leadership of Mr. Bill Gray and General Counsel Suzanne Gardner, who's been very involved in the program, and provides appropriate guidelines to actual perceived threats. There's a very detailed protocol, which, again, can be found on the SharePoint and in Rule, that guides the campus leaderships through this response. In addition to the safety and well-being of all students, faculty, and staff, a very special focus is made to ensure that the actions taken are in the best possible interest of the targeted subject, whether it be student, faculty, or staff, that has demonstrated this behavior of cause concern. It's not a punitive program. We really look to identify what the source of the problem is and assist, in most cases, that student in getting the additional assistance or help that they may, they may need. With our enrollment of 33,000 students on eight sites, we have successfully addressed a wide variety of problems and issues over the past three years through this Threat Assessment Model. As recently as last month, we had a student that was taken into protective custody, Baker Active, as a result of actions that were demonstrated and addressed through the Threat Assessment Program. Again, it's our intent to be as supportive as possible to all of our students involved while we ensure the safe campuses for students, faculty, and staff. Just wanted you to be aware of the process. It is a very formal process. And really, if imitation is the highest form of flattery, we now have other institutions that we have seen our Threat Assessment Program, which we developed from the ground floor, replicated, so it's a pretty nice compliment. Be happy to answer any questions?
Well, how many threats have you had since 2007? I assume that's when this started?
We document and maintain those. Do you happen to know the total precise number?
I don't know how many we've actually had, but I would say maybe two or three a year.
Yeah. I would say a total of about eight or 10 that we've been directly involved with that were formal threat assessment, not other those that did not reach the threshold of activity.
But these went all the way through, through the process?
Through the process.
There were some that we started a preliminary investigation on, and we did a preliminary threat assessment, and it did not proceed through the full process. But I would say probably three a year have gone through the whole process.
And they're all documented, all the details. There's forms that are maintained. It's a very formal process, so we'll have it as a pedigree if we need to fall back to that, that information. Of course, if it's a criminal justice issue, police issue, it's turned over and they're handled through the criminal justice system. This is just for internal processes that do not reach that threshold.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Brock, thank you. Please extend our appreciation to the cadets, the color guard that were here this morning. We didn't get a chance to thank them before they, before they left, but please pass along our appreciation. And thank you again. I know a lot of preparation goes into preparing to have a board meeting at a campus that we're not usually at, and so we appreciate all the efforts you put in for this.
Good. Thank you. Glad to have you with us.
Dr. Gordon?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, I want to focus on career development activities that have occurred on the downtown and midtown campuses. Dr. Jerry Cade, who is our Guidance Counselor, as well as the Veterans Affairs and Career Counseling Person on both the campuses, has taken the initiative to create Java with Jerry, as well as some walk-up seminars where students can come in and get information on resources. And what you have on the slide is some of the dates that he's actually put on these meetings and presentations and seminars. And we've got a couple of additional dates left for Java with Jerry, which will be April 18th in downtown and midtown, April 11th. And by the numbers, he's done 11 presentations for classrooms, 15 individual appointments, seven live seminars. He's done mobile career consultations at both the downtown, and that's been nine of those for a total of 365 students that he's actually serviced so far. I now want to commend him and all of the Student Services Department for being proactive and taking this initiative out to the students and getting in front of it so we can really provide the assistance that students need to be focused and continue to be engaged and complete their studies. Questions?
Questions?
I have one.
Mr. North?
So how does this work? Does he, he gives a seminar, and then he engages students in some type of interview afterwards and walks them through what their career choices are?
There are a couple of different ways that it works. The, he usually sets up in Student Lounge, and it's, you know, non-threatening environment where students can walk up and have casual conversations with them about broad career types of choices that are available to them. Follow-up will happen with a scheduled appointment in his office.
Is that the only way that he has interaction with the students, is if they walk out and walk up in the Student Lounge?
No, no. He, Dr. Cade is one of those people that's very visible on the downtown campus. He does a power walking club. He walks about two times a day all through the house. He's constantly visible with the students, and all students are welcome to come in and see him at any time. So high visibility, high student contact. And he's our only counselor, so he sees a lot of students.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Freitas?
Good morning, gentlemen of the board, ladies.
Good morning.
Guests, I heard Dr. Law was going to steal some of my thunder. Should I yield the floor?
No, no.
No? All right.
I'm behaving myself.
You're behaving yourself. All right, thank you, sir. First of all, I want to thank a lot of folks for their support in the model United Nations program that we are now engaged in here at the college. Thank you, the board. Thank Dr. Law, Dr. Furlong, Dr. Smiley, Dr. Cooper. I'm sure I'm missing a lot of folks, but these are some of the real heavy hitters who have been supporting the program. It's a program where college students compete and get together in a mock-model United Nations session, where they form delegations, coalitions, they draft resolutions together, debate. It's a really incredible, life-altering experience for many of these students. It's sometimes one of the first times where these students are really working together in a very professional environment, and they are working very, very hard with one another. We had students in New York two weeks ago who were putting in 15 and 16-hour days, and they were just jazzed. They did an incredible job. The conference in New York two weeks ago was our first major conference for St. Petersburg College, and we actually were recognized with honorable mention, which is almost unheard of for an institution to go out and compete their first time out and receive such a high honor. So it's a testament to the level of commitment of our 14 students that we brought and a lot of the faculty and staff here at the college, so I wanted to thank you all for that. At 2:00 today, at, in Clearwater, will be one of our first sessions where we're sharing the experience some of the students. It's in Social Science, Room 160. There will be other sessions, and I'll inform you all of those. This one was set up fairly last minute, but I'll give you all more notice in the future. Any questions?
Dr. Law?
Mr. Chairman, can we just indulge, just a couple of minutes? The part that I want to speak out loud, though, is the nature of the preparation that goes into this, because it's very high level of critical thinking and preparation. And then the interaction, of course, is the growth part. But take just a second, if you would, as to lead up.
Sure. We were very blessed here at St. Petersburg College to have so much administrative support. But we are also blessed, our first time out, colleges, college delegations are assigned countries. And our first request was Afghanistan, and we received Afghanistan, which is huge with, when you're in the competition, because so many countries want to work with your country, if you're Afghanistan, if you're a high-profile country. So for at least two or three months, the students research these countries. They research the positions. They research the foreign policy of these countries, who their partners are. It's very in-depth, and all of these students are actually receiving college credit in a United Nations course. So it's a very academic endeavor, and there's quite a bit of preparation on the front end as well.
Great. Mr. Burke?
So are the students selected by virtue of taking this course, or is this an extracurricular activity in addition to the course?
It is an extracurricular. Uh, it is an extracurricular activity in addition to the course. However, the students do have to be in the course in order to compete because there is so much prep work to be done on the front end.
Any other questions? Excellent, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, no old business, old business for this morning, so on to Agenda Item Seven, New Business, Student Success and Achievement. Dr. Williams?
My colleague, Dr. Carragio. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of Trustees members, and Dr. Law, our wonderful President. It's, um, very exciting for us to stand before you today to share with you, um, a project that we're working on to enhance student success at the front door. We, um, administered an inventory called the Survey of Entering Student Engagement, SENS, last August to about one thousand six hundred and eighty students. Majority of them were brand-new students to Saint Petersburg College. The purpose of the inventory is to help students under, help the staff understand how we engage students at the front door. The front door is not just when they walk in and apply. The front door extends all the way through the first three weeks of class. So it also includes an academic component as, as well. And so we administered this inventory and we received the results from that inventory. And this morning, Dr. Carragio will be sharing with you the results of the SENS survey. The interesting thing that we did at Saint Petersburg College is, is a follow-up to the survey, eight of us, including Dr. Law, attended a conference to help us work on our plans for improving how we engage students at the front door. So we're gonna share with you first some of our, um, overarching findings and then we'll talk with you about what we have done to make the improvements.
This gives you a little bit of the information at, at the high level. Um, the SENS survey is basically broken down into subsections of questions and they refer to those as benchmark areas. And as you can see from the chart there, uh, one is an early connections, that's a very front-end, uh, students getting, um, acquainted with the college, interacting with staff on, right before they start classes. Uh, high expectations and aspirations is really what the standards of the college are and how we're communicating and vocalizing that information to students so they know what those expectations are on the front end. Clear and academic plan and pathway is really, relates to some of the work we're doing right now with the Individualized Student Learning Plan and really that focus on, do they have a trajectory? Do they know what they have to do right out of the gate in order to be successful? The effective track to college readiness really speaks to a lot of our developmental students and that's a large percentage of our entering student population and focusing on what they need to do and get done in order to get the college-ready work. Engaged learning is really how, how involved they're getting right out of the gate in that first three weeks of coursework. How engaged are they getting? How involved teamwork in the classroom, how they're getting involved with the faculty discussions out of the classroom. And then finally is the academic and social support network. Uh, for true student engagement, you really need both components. It's not just what's going in the classroom, but it's interaction with their fellow students during those first three weeks of classes. So this is kind of an overview and, and we're somewhat pleased with the results, uh, but we realize as an institution, we aspire to be at the top. And what we're looking at here is, uh, three different benchmark scores. Uh, they derive their benchmarks by setting up a mean of fifty and a standard deviation of twenty-five, so all the scores are normalized around that. If you looked at the overall cohort, everybody's gonna have an average of fifty across. And the comparisons you can see are our scores compared to those of extra-large colleges that fit in our category and those at the top-performing colleges, and that's really where we aspire to be. So while we see some gains above that fifty average threshold, we're not near where we wanna be in terms of ranking us right among those top-performing colleges. So we've a lot of work to do and a lot of the initiatives that we have going on right now with the Life Plan and the College Experience directly to these results.
Before we go any further, can I ask you?
Sure.
Back to the, the very first two, early connections and high expectations and aspirations. Can you explain to me again what that measures?
Um, on the front end, early connections is their interaction with the college right before they start classes.
So how do you determine that, though? I'm not quite sure.
Um, these are specific questions that are on the survey. They're asking the student, you know, did, um, on, on the front end, were you able to, to, uh, did you receive anything from the college? Did you, um, uh, interact with folks before that first day of class? Uh, that, that's actually some overview. Um, there's a-
Did someone know your name? Did they ask you questions specific to your lifestyle and what's happening in your world going forward? And this is an area we still need to work on.
And then the next slide, I will look at some specific questions from that first category, early connections. High expectations and aspirations is, do they feel the high level of standards coming in? You know, that, are they pushed a little bit into what they need to accomplish? And is that communicated from the faculty member to that student within the first three weeks of class and staff?
Okay.
Who, who are the top performers and top performing colleges and do, do we, are we able to grab the data to know what they're doing that we're not?
Um, we are able to identify those specific programs. I don't have a list of those right now and they're more than just one set. The, the results actually reflect the top performing in each one of the different categories.
I understand that, but are we able to grab the data?
Yes.
That says, here's what they're doing that we're not doing.
Yes, yes. We'll, we'll be able to identify those colleges and then work and have connections with them. Um, and we, and I'm sure Dr. Law's gonna mention this in, in his discussion later. We were just recently participated in the Entering Student Success Institute, which is part of the Sesi family of assessments. We took these real resources and brought a leadership team together to discuss those results and connect them with the various initiatives that we're doing. So we were able to actually dialogue with some of those top performing colleges at that institute.
Did I get a dialogue about career planning? Did I get dialogue about time management and how I'm gonna succeed? Was I counseled as to, uh, making a plan to, to go forward? Uh, do I know where the help is available at the college? And, and the questions say, did somebody interact with you? Did you get the kind of information you need on finances? Sometimes, always, never, that sort of thing. So, so we're just trying to take, this is the front-end assessment of how are students approaching us and how do we better engage them? Because if they get off on the wrong foot, they're likely to stay on the wrong foot.
So, uh, then, uh-
Yeah.
The very first module is early connections. This is just whether or not, as far as I can tell, it's whether somebody knew their name that they didn't know before or something, was there?
I can jump just ahead to this next slide.
Okay.
And right on this slide, we have some sample questions from early connections and ones that actually we, these particular results are our highest levels of, um, uh, student engagement. We're gonna look in a second about our lowest levels of student engagement and some of the comparisons, but here's some of the questions, as Dr. Law mentioned. "The college provided me with adequate information about financial assistance." That's an early connections question. "A college staff member helped me determine whether I qualify for financial assistance." Another financial aid related to that category of early connections. So there's two examples right there. There's, there are two examples that we actually did very well with compared to other colleges. Clearly, we, we believe very much we have, you know, room to grow and we can improve upon that, but we did better than the average college.
We'd be happy to pull the entire questionnaire and it's not-
Yeah.
And, and give you an idea of what are the nature of the questions we're asking for each of these subgroup areas.
Oh.
Happy to do that.
Sure. That'd be great. I, I, it's very interesting. So I was, uh, do I, please don't take it negatively. I'm actually, I think it's, yeah.
And actually, in this document, if you turn to the, uh, second page, um, it's ac, yeah, page two, uh, they actually break down each of these subcategories, uh, conceptually what they represent, uh, and they just did a factor analysis to pull out that, those particular groupings of questions, those clusters, uh, and we can get you the specific questions themselves if you'd like to see them.
Can we go back to the first slide, please?
Sure.
Now, uh, does Sesi come up with this survey?
Yes, it's developed by the, the Center for Student Engagement at University of Texas, Austin.
And how do we administer this thing? Is it, um, in all of our campuses or what, what sample?
We provide them as- They give us some, uh, categories of classes, Comp One, Developmental Education classes, um, and we from that derive a sample set of all the classes of that type at our institution. So the typical kinds of classes that entering students would participate in. We give that large sample to, to Sesi. They then do a random sample of that model. So they ended up with a hundred and twelve sections out of the thousand or so that we provided them that, where the survey was actually administered to students in class.
So a hundred and twelve section, is it, is it college-wide?
College-wide.
So people in Tarpon and people in Midtown, people in Seminole, people in Clearwater?
It is a, currently a paper assessment, so it is limited to those classes in which a student's actually gonna participate in at least, you know, blended where there's at least one face-to-face meeting a week or a face-to-face class. So it's not gonna, uh, count those students that are completely online.
And how many students took the survey at Saint Petersburg?
Um, about sixteen hundred and eighty, eighty-six.
Okay, that's a good sample. Okay.
Yeah, and it's a representative sample based on their survey design.
And was this survey ta, I know two thousand and eleven wasn't taken in the, um, the winter session or the fall session or?
This is fall.
Fall.
And this is our first time we've participated in the SENS. Uh, we also did the Sesi, uh, in the spring and we're doing it for the second time, we did it for the second time this spring, so we're gonna look at comparison results. Next fall, we'll take the baseline this year. Next fall-
So just this past August through December, that session?
Uh, this past, this past fall was that when we committed this SENS.
These are students who entered last August?
Okay.
Ken, and then, then we surveyed them in their classes mid-semester in the fall. You get the results right after the first of the year and then you make the comparative.
So we got these results in January?
Right, right, okay.
Now, these will serve as our baseline data for our initiatives that we're currently undertaking and we'll compare it again.
We'll offer it again this coming fall.
Oh, so it'll be some-
We want to have something to compare to, to make sure that the work we're doing to address it is, is effective.
And how are we, um, the, the decision-making process? I, I know we just got the data in January and it's, it's only April, it's not a long time, but how have we used this data? Can you give any samples of things we've done differently since, since January?
Well, if, if you'll hang on to the end, just, there's a couple of key findings that feed directly into budget initiatives, Mr. Burke. So if you'll stick with us as we just sort of pick out the, the most pronounced findings, okay?
That presentation has some of that too.
Well, you'll see what, what justified the, the priorities within the budget for, uh, the student support and the student engagement and some of that data came directly from this study.
So, and, and one thing else, um, what, what Devron was asking about, I would like to see those lists of high-performing colleges too.
Sure.
For each of those categories. That, I think that information would be very helpful.
Sure. Also, and you may be answering this question later on if you want, it's fine. The definition of front door, what, what is that? Are you gonna answer that later?
Well, front door is after they have applied every action that the student goes through to get in the seat and then it takes them through the first three weeks of the class. So it's from the time they apply everything, when they speak with a counselor, when they deal with financial aid, if they're trying to figure out their classes, if they tested in developmental, all of those things are engagement points and, um, these are areas that we're trying to improve upon. I think, um, Mr. Givens, uh, last year, year before, you visited during the first week and you experienced what the students were experiencing. And so a part of this is to definitely enhance their experience and not have them going all over the place and make it more, um, meaningful and, and thought-provoking to get them through the process in an easier, um, more effective manner.
One last question. Extra-large colleges, I would assume those are, uh, the FSU's, Gainesville's of the world or?
This is specifically on the, the community college category.
Okay.
Valencia, Brown. Florida has a preponderance. I mean, we're probably fifth or sixth largest and these would be multi-campus, extra-large is probably gonna be fifteen thousand. If I had to guess, we'd go find the exact parameter, but it's, it's gonna be significant multi-campus institutions like ours.
And then what would be a top-performing college? Like, who, who is that?
It pains me to say like Valencia.
Well, as you said, they could be a separate, they could just be high-performing in one category and not necessarily the next one over.
That's correct.
Not the same twenty.
But there will be a small handful and we'll bring in the names. They will not be unknown to those of us who are in the industry of, of the colleges who've been on this agenda for a while. So you're gonna find Johnson County, you're gonna find Maricopa, you're gonna find the Lone Star in Houston, uh, you're going to find Northern Virginia, and these are the big, multi-campus, Miami Dade is of course at, at, at the highest ranks. Let's, let's get the list, though. They're, they're good colleges and good colleagues.
And the research, research shows us, you know, there's a lot of research out there about engaged students, but Sesi's really now focusing on is that entering student experience and the entering students bringing them in the door up to that first three-week period and, and their higher likelihood of being successful and completing. Um, this is breaking us down to some of the specific questions that fall in those categories. Uh, it's a little hard to read, but you'll see off to the left, you can actually see the category that the particular item falls within. So rather than that mean of fifty, this is actually looking at the percentage of students that responded a certain way to an individual item on the survey. One of the things that bubbles up here very clearly is two of our five questions deal with financial aid and I know we've done a lot of work in the financial aid arena to get communications and information out to students so they can be informed from day one on what the expectations are in the financial aid area. The other side of the coin is the aspects of lowest student engagement and that's what we'll see here. And a couple of things bubble up clearly to the top and I think it very much aligns with some of the strategic initiatives that we're working at in the institution. And again, this is looking, this is basically surveying students from either the fourth or the fifth week of classes. So the focus is up through that third week of classes and a lot of the questions actually specifically say, tell us about your experience in the first three weeks. Um, but the latter two questions on there are the frequency of different student services. The first is the use of writing lab and/or other skill lab. And you can see there, we only had about a quarter of our students, um, that actually participated with that particular service. And Dr. Williams is gonna talk a little bit more in detail, uh, but a lot of that is a culture change. You know, the idea that going to the student, uh, out of classroom support is a punitive thing. You know, I only do that when I really get in trouble. I only get, do that when I really get behind. And what the research is showing us is we need to get students engaged at the front door with those services. We need to really make it about supplemental learning, not about some punitive thing they do when they start to get some poor grades. It really needs to supplement their learning experience. So that gives us a lot of good information and it sets a baseline for us to work on and improve and, and pull a lot of this out of classroom support components. And then the latter one there you'll see is use of computer lab. Uh, we're at forty-six point four percent, um, overall is about fifty-two percent, you know, clearly an area we can work on and really let students know where those labs are and get them engaged into supplemental learning on campus and taking advantage of those services.
These were the areas where our score was furthest away from the others who were being assessed at this point, okay? So these are the clearly ones. I, I, I can't let it go past us, though. If you read the whole report, there's, you're seeing the one that pops out the, the most pronounced, that is the out-of-class support for student learning in, in their assistance. We're furthest off the standard of the parallels and those are the lowest scores. And, and, uh, some of the actions that we took last month had to do with invigorating that. You'll see the budget has a very pronounced flavor for us to do more in that area. It's critical if students, Ken and I were at a, the conference this week and, and the, the comment that I wrote down was, uh, access without support is not really an opportunity. And we need to make sure that as we provide access, we're providing real opportunity for students. So that's, we're using this data to feedback how we're going to better support students, particularly in those critical first weeks.
So where are we in this plan? We are on track, very proud to say that when we attended the Sesi Institute, Saint Petersburg College was looked, looked at as one of the, um, best practices and we had, um, groups of people chasing us to find out, how did you do this? Well, how, well, tell us how you're doing this, because we were already planning for student success at the front door. And so we're real proud to share what we're doing so far to help change those numbers in the student's experience. First, with academic and social, um, support, where we're looking at what students need out of class to be successful, we'll be presenting to you at a later date the new Life Plan that helps students understand, how many hours am I working? What's the best, what is the best number of credits that I should take? You know, where should I go? How to get started? And to help students along the progression timeline so that they don't wait and make a mistake and still not complete the number of credits that they need to be successful. The Life Plan is coming forward, ensuring students' awareness of academic and student support services available. We have our new student orientation. We have our expansion of the college study skills as well as the, as mentoring courses. So these are all retention initiatives to help students progress and stay in school. These are most likely going to make the largest impact on student success. Clear academic plan, we have the new individualized learning plan that will provide students a roadmap to tell them what courses to take and when and how and to help them take charge of their learning instead of us just telling them, take this, take that. They'll get to go in and make those determinations. Um, we have, um, the automated graduation check where students can really go and look at, where am I? How close am I to graduating and not have any guesswork to it. And not have any guesswork to it. It will actually show students within their learning plan, here's how close you are to graduation. Here are the courses that you need to take to graduate. So they'll have a clear path. With engaged learning, what we're trying to do here is expand out-of-class support and encourage students from the beginning to be proactive in that it's cool to go to tutoring. It's okay to get the help and be ahead. And not to wait until you're in panic mode. And then you go and you've lost many weeks of assistance where you can improve your chances of being successful. We've also changed our working with students with out-of-class support. Where faculty members are starting to add this to their class syllabus, to have students go to the learning support lab as a part of their course. And we also have faculty members who have volunteered to work in the learning support lab or have their office hours there. These are all the best practices to help students utilize the out-of-class support and not see it as a punitive initiative where they're ashamed of being in the learning support lab. So I think that's a good thing going. The early warning system, this is where faculty members will be able to let advisors know when a student is slipping. Whether they're coming to class late, coming to class unprepared, not coming to class at all, or failing their coursework. The faculty will attempt to work with the student initially. And if they're not able to get them where they are, then we'll pull in the troops to help communicate with those students and share with them what they need to do to be successful. Sort of like a triage kind of opportunity where you have two or three people working with that student to try to help them be successful. And then the last one, the effective track to college readiness. The new student orientation will help with that, as well as the new expansion of the SLS courses. Students right now who test in the two or more developmental courses must also take a student life-type course, which will include a mentor who will work with that student to help them utilize the support and resources and help address some of their out-of-classroom issues. So we're well ahead of ourselves in moving forward. We're not starting brand-new after getting this news. With us looking at our first-time-in-college students, starting in 2010, we were able to see we were headed down the wrong track. So we've been able to turn that around and make it better for the student. So, we'll go to the next one. So what would you need to know here about the CENS data and where we're headed? Number one, engagement for students is ongoing. It's not a project. It is something that we were eagerly seek, eagerly seek each term. It's not a one-time initiative. We want our students to succeed. Number two, we still have a long way to go to support our students coming in through the front door. And we'll continue to make improvements to that. And helping students start off strong will help them achieve their goals. So we're very happy to offer this and to share this news with the board.
Excellent. Other questions, comments?
I think this is fantastic. You know, I strongly recommend that we continue looking at this data and continue to develop it. It's very interesting, very helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke? This question's directed to you, Dr. Law. And I know a lot of what was mentioned here as our solutions are things that we've talked about for a while. I'm just interested, from the data which we got in January, did that change anything? Or did we add anything as a result that we were, that wasn't reflected previously?
I will tell you, it sharpened two or three key dialogues, okay? This out-of-class support, we're almost manic on this issue now. That's all we talk about. The out-of-class support, making sure that students can get help in their class as the normal way of getting through a class, not as a special add-on to, for some students, okay? So that's been a big dialogue for us to make that change in the way our students move through. And again, you'll see some budget stuff there. The, as well as we were doing with the student orientation, we're making that much more purposeful and focused on what happens there. It is not just the socialization of students as they come to college. It is really passing the ownership for their education to them with our full support. So there's that part. And then the third piece, these individualized learning plans, which we will demonstrate for you. You saw them in December in their early form. They come over the horizon in May. Really is a way that we're changing how all of us can contribute to students staying on track and how students can bring their best energies to stay on track. So yes, we were doing these things. We were heading in that direction. But I think now we're saying, here's what happens. When you look at all of the assembled data, so we do CENS, and we do SC, we do several things. The first three weeks make all the difference for students. And that is new to us. We had everything, but it was much more casual as to how it intercepted our students. And we are now very focused on making those first few weeks in the semester much, much more focused for student support. I'm really, you can hear my voice, I think we're on the right track here.
I know it seems obvious, but has CSE measured, these schools, which are the high-performing schools that have done well with early connection, high expectations, the career path? Is it, has CSE definitely shown where completion
Yes.
is tied to these numbers then? And how much is it tied to these numbers? Do we know?
I'll pull that. I happen to be, I'm on that national board, by the way.
Because really, that's the end result, is completion.
And I'll bring you, I'm on yet another national board for this. To see, we've done all these studies. What really matters is what we're trying to discern. Let me be sure everybody understands, this is rigorously statistically controlled. I mean, we pass them the list of names, they choose the courses. All the questions are rigorously developed so that they can pass muster. But here's what we're seeing, and I'll bring it back next month, it's really interesting. Practices versus policies. And the separation really occurs to, what are you actually doing, not what really are the policies? So every student must be, have an orientation. Great, that's a policy. What happens in that orientation really makes a difference. Somebody gave me this information, somebody did this. Little things. In that, the faculty member reviewed personally the attendance policy during the first week of classes. Not that it was included in the syllabus, we require that. But somebody said, let's walk through the attendance policy here. Makes a huge difference in student success. Seems perfectly logical. Why aren't we already doing it is a better question, I think. So we're seeing those kinds of things, Mr. Burke. I'll bring it back. But we're seeing then what the practices are that make a difference versus just having policies that are, that support those practices.
And the last thing, the ones that are the, that if CSE's done these studies, which I'm sure they have, which of these are the biggest indicator of completion or success? Because that would seem to me, if there's a direct, if there's more of a direct correlation between engaged learning, which I would think there would be, and graduation, then early connection to graduation or completion, however you measure completion, that that too is a question of, because we have limited resources. We may have even more limited resources, depending what happens in the next couple of weeks. You know, to say, well, where are we going to put the emphasis of the money? Is it going to be more in early, you know, in here or this category? If this one has a more direct correlation to completion, it seems like we would put it there.
I think, for me, that it's becoming crystal clear. Does the student know what they're doing? Where are they headed? And can they plan for that? So if they know they're transferring, that's why we put in a great deal of energy in understanding, where are you vis-à-vis graduation? What do you need to do? Secondly, and you will see in the budget, an area that we need some work is the early career counseling. If you know what you're going to do, you tend to do better.
Sure.
The provosts have done a really good job of trying to get an early engagement with students on that as part of the intake process. And then bolstering the career centers so that there are the kinds of dialogues that I think we just heard. Much more purposeful, though. I want those to be built into what we're doing with students. So those two things seem to me to be, you know, when the students know where they're headed, you can have a better dialogue with them. No, they can change that at any given moment. I mean, that's what part of college is, is that sorting out process. But not wandering through the institution, that's not a success factor.
And Mr. Brett?
I know, I sound like a preacher as I said my last comment, and I'm going to make another one. But this becomes even more pronounced because of the general ed change.
Yes.
As to how it's going to affect us as far as achievement and career path. And, you know, there's going to be a lot more selection of possibility, of variety of, because we had such a large general ed thing before, which was, you know, we could predict where students now may be a lot broader. It may, it may be a learning curve on our part to figure out. That I'm, leaving it up to experts like you.
Excellent report. Excellent report. Dr. Williams, Dr. Cardio. I just think the more you touch these, our students, I don't want to call them young people because some of them are not so young. But the more that we touch them, I think the more success that they'll have. And I had the opportunity, and I should have said it during our earlier comments. One of the best seminars I went to, that I've seen on any of our campuses, is, is Dr. Gordon behind you? Kevin, would you stand up? I can't see him. We went to a seminar, the last board meeting, right after, you all had a blackmail initiative seminar. Was that what it was? And I tell you that that was one of the most comprehensive, well-thought-out programs that I've been to. And we touched only like thirteen African-American males in that seminar. I mean, they went through, if you've had problems in your past of criminal, they had an attorney come in one time. They've had all kinds of stuff. And this is, this report says that we're headed in the right direction. We're doing exactly what Kevin and those other African-American males from other campuses were doing. We're touching them as many times as we can. And I think as many students as we touch, as many times as we touch them, we'll be successful at getting them out of here, trained and with degrees. So.
Thank you.
Other comments? Thank you very much. Thank you. Dr. Cooper?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. President. I'm here to share an update of information in regards to House Bill seventy-one thirty-five, which is going to affect our general education plan going forward for our students. What I'd like to show you here is where we currently are, and this only affects the AA degree. And currently, we require thirty-six hours in five of the areas that you see listed here. Communications, mathematics, social science, humanities, and ethics, and natural science. Starting in two thousand and fourteen, that number will be reduced to thirty credit hours. Fifteen of those credit hours are going to be determined by statewide faculty committees that will be made up of representatives from the Florida State College system, as well as the university system. Those committees will convene, and they will choose five courses in each of these areas. And all of our students, starting in two thousand and fourteen, will have to complete one of those five courses to achieve fifteen of the thirty credit hours for gen ed going forward. The other fifteen credit hours will be determined by our faculty. And we have requested that our FGO leadership come up with a review plan and process that we will start in the fall, and they will present to the faculty at our welcome back.
Dr. Cooper, can you give us an example? I really don't understand what the statewide committee's going to do.
They are going to...
They're going to come up with five courses? Are there going to be one in natural, maybe one in each of these?
There are going to be five courses in communications, five in mathematics,
Oh.
five in social science, five in humanities, and five in natural science. And then each of our students will have to choose one from each of those areas.
From each of them.
For the first fifteen hours. Right.
Is that, which column's that?
That's the second column.
Okay.
Right. Then we, as a college, will determine what the other fifteen hours will be made up of. They do need to come from these five areas. And it's up to us as to how many choices we're going to have. And that will be determined as we move forward and review this whole process.
Like in communications, under the last column, we may have two courses, or we may have three courses, or we may have one course. That's our selection?
That's our selection. Right.
Can you go back? Oh, I have it here. I'll just look on my own.
Did you have another question?
No.
Some of the other aspects associated with this legislation is in regards to the foreign language requirement. At this time, the foreign language requirement does not have to be met as part of the AA degree. However, starting in two thousand and fourteen, if a student has not completed two credits of high school foreign language, they will be required to complete eight to ten hours at the college level during their AA degree. And American Sign Language is accepted as a substitute for that requirement. We are limited to sixty credit hours for the Associate in Arts degree and a hundred and twenty for the Baccalaureate degree, unless previous approval has been given by the State Board of Education. And we currently have that for nursing, education, orthotics, and prosthetics. They run between a hundred and twenty-one to a hundred and twenty-four credit hours. Yes, Mr. Burke?
I set this question, and I just wondered, since we have so many bachelor programs, which we're offering now, from the AS to the bachelor program. Let's say you're a nursing student, and you're getting an AS in nursing where you're not required a foreign language. If you go back to achieve your bachelor's in nursing, will you have to take the foreign language then in your final two years?
Yes.
So for all our AS programs, even though you can get your AS without the foreign language, if you want to go on to earn your bachelor's, you must take the foreign language?
Correct.
Is that a current requirement?
Yes.
So that has not changed? Nothing has affected that? Okay. What's that?
Some additional stipulations are that when the student has achieved thirty credit hours, starting in two thousand and thirteen, they will have to indicate the baccalaureate degree of their choice. And we will be required to notify the student of the degree program prerequisites for the institution of their choice. Also, prior to registration, we will provide enrolled students, as well as public high school students in our region, with access to the Department of Economic Opportunity reports that have information about our program's employment and earning outcomes. So we've created a tentative timeline in regards to how we go forward from here. On April twentieth, there will be a webinar by the Florida Department of Education to discuss these updates. Then on August the sixteenth, the FGO will be presenting their plan for the review process. And on August of two thousand and thirteen, then, that's when the students will, once they have achieved thirty credit hours, will have to identify their baccalaureate degree of choice. We'll then be providing access to this Department of Economic Opportunity employment and earnings information in regards to our programs. And we hope to be coming then in October to the board for approval of our recommended changes so that we can then create the guaranteed schedule, starting in November of two thousand and thirteen, for the two thousand and fourteen-fifteen year. And then those new general ed requirements will be implemented in August of two thousand and fourteen. Yes?
Do we know how many of our students coming here with the intention of getting an AA degree have already met the foreign language requirement in high school?
The majority of those have. I don't have specific numbers, I will get that for you. But the majority of the students coming to us for AAs have completed their language requirements.
So they won't have to take it in their first two years with us?
Correct. And we are going to work with the Pinellas County Schools to strongly encourage students who are coming to us for their AA to do the language requirement in high school.
Okay, let's say if the majority is fifty-five, sixty percent, that means forty percent of the students, which before can graduate with an AA without the foreign language, would now be required to have it in their first two years.
That is correct. That is correct.
And I look at this, and just from a management angle, it looks like that we have nine hours of communications, which will go down to six. Is that correct, under this wave of explanation? And humanities and ethics would go down from nine to six?
I'm cautioning about making any, we're in the study as to what will be the impact. But we will be limited to fifteen in those areas, Mr. Burke.
See, that's, I don't understand, where's, I don't understand the choice. I thought we said we had to get three in each of these categories.
Okay, but I don't want to say we'll guarantee any given course in any given area. We haven't made that determination yet.
No, no, I'm just asking
I'm sorry.
where the six hours are coming from.
Oh, it has to come out of our side of the ledger, yes, right.
Those two categories, communications and humanities and ethics, according to this chart. That is...
No, we have, we can make, the fifteen can be distributed however we want, right, Ann?
They have to come from the five areas.
So yes, they will have to come, and we have to reduce in those areas.
Those two areas will have the reduction then?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
But do not make the leap too far in language, because that's an additive requirement. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. So it, I'm just saying, we would...
That's correct.
It looks like we're going to have to hire a lot more foreign language instructors or offer a lot more foreign language section. Does that, a bottom line out of this?
I would suspect that to be true. But again, we'll be happy that we have the ability to simulate, what do we look like today? We could run through today's and say, where would we be if it were, if these were in place today? We're going to need more foreign language, there's no question about that. I'm very, let me not talk in code here. This is zero-sum game for courses. This is zero-sum game for, for courses. If you have to, if, if you have a course that meets a requirement, that's a really good thing. There is more demand for those courses than for just free electives. If you start restricting which courses meet those demands-
No, I'm not.
I'm, I'm sorry, I wanna be sure we're clear. This is a very stressful thing for, for institutional planning, to get the right general ed program, but also for faculty loads. Okay?
Right.
And that's the anxiety that you're hearing.
Are these the legislatively, does he need categories here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So basically, there's six credit hours, one, two, three, fi- in each of these areas that the legislature even have.
Let's assume that's correct, yes.
Correct.
Is that what the legislation says?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Let me, let me see if I can end us on a little more positive tenor here, 'cause it's a very difficult issue. I, I, when we were in Tallahassee last week, I stopped by to talk and, and talk to the chairman of the committee who, from which this came. It came from President Bernie Manchin's testimony at the legislature, saying, with so many students coming from so many different areas, they're bringing so many different preparations, the need for, uh, realigning some sort of core curriculum so that we can talk about what an educated student looks like, and, and what that looks like, is, we're losing some of that. If they have that problem at the University of Florida, trust me, we have that in, in many times over at, at the, the kind of intake process we have. So the core of saying, what does it mean to be a graduate, is still a very valuable discussion for us to have. It deteriorates really quickly when you say, one of these, one of those, one of these, not this, plus this. We, the first order of business ought to be listening to our public that is telling us, send us graduates who can do certain kinds of high-order thinking and, and what expectations we have. So that's, I wanna spend some time making sure that we have that discussion, and then the courses will fall out very nicely after that. But if we try to run early to lock in this and not that, we'll, we'll end up with a general ed program that's really just a, a, just a better melange of courses, and I, I don't think that's in our best interest, not in students' best interest. So, so the, the, the pace that you see us doing is because this is a fundamental issue for the nature of where we're headed with, with students coming from many more institutions, students transferring in more credits. What does it mean when somebody gets a degree that says St. Pete College on it? And, and we owe it to ourselves to have that dialogue. Um, so that's, sir.
Under this legislation, we can't require more than thirty generated.
That's correct.
And so, a student will have that flexibility if it's, they're among the majority of students who have already taken their foreign language in, and met it in high school, they could potentially take electives which they're, which they may just be interested in learning, um, some area-
Exactly.
Or they can take it more towards their, um, major area additional courses. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we have, uh, the option of giving a certain indication on a diploma if a student completes certain things as part of their degree while they're with us, like service learning, internships, maybe additional courses that would prepare them better for work. So there are, obviously, various options available to us, and we wanna keep those doors open and, uh, not make, uh, decisions too quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Thank you. Okay, moving on, through the agenda, please. I'd like to have a motion to approve Agenda Item Seven, B, C, D, E, F, and G, with discussion, please.
Which items again? I'm sorry.
Seven, A, B, or, excuse me, um, seven, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Some of-
And a second.
Second.
I have, uh, a question or two regarding Item E-two, which has to do with pre-qualified small contractors. Dr. Wall?
Sir.
Should that question go to you?
Yes, I'll start here, and then if it's really hard, I'll, I'll deliver it to the Vice President.
Looking at this list, is it my understanding that this is an existing list, and that the bold printed ones, which look like they are maybe four, four on this list of three pages, are the only new ones?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Okay. I'm on seven, E-two. And that the ones with the asterisks are the minority contractors? We, we talked about this a little bit at a previous meeting, and I'd just like to know, once again, what the efforts are on behalf of the college to increase our minority contractor And I remember we, you were, you were, you had some good efforts going the last time we talked about this, and it's really more just kind of an update as to how that's coming.
Um, yes, thank you, good morning. We have done a number of things ourself, and we have done some things cooperatively with the City of St. Petersburg. Last year, we held a, um, do-business with St. Petersburg College in the construction area workshop at the Midtown Center, um, in conjunction with the City of St. Petersburg. We, uh, put out flyers, um, we put ads in the newspapers, we put ads in the, um, on the radio, the City of St. Petersburg put it on their website, we put it on our website, and essentially invited, um, folks in the community to come in and to talk to us about a couple of things. First of all, what type of construction projects we had available and would have available? What type of services did we use at the college for folks that are subcontractors in the smaller areas? What would we have available? And actually, how do you do business with the college if you're a subcontractor and a contractor? We had documents that were there, we went through the documents with folks, um, so we made an effort, um, to, to do that. In addition to that, um, a couple of months ago, um, we had another workshop. We have, uh, we had an RFQ, um, advertised for contractors to do work, um, from about twenty-five thousand to a million dollars, with consideration and points being given to firms that were minority contractors. So we held that workshop on the St. Pete Gibbs Campus, again, advertised, um, in a number of different places, specifically to, um, notify the minority community that we were having these workshops. We will be bringing those, um, contractors back to you probably next month with a recommendation.
So you feel like that was a, a successful effort?
Honestly, Mr. Brett, we've done everything that I can and others of us. Uh, Dr. Gordon has worked with us on it, um, Watson Haynes has worked with us on it, we have Chad Jones, who's with our, um, Harvard Jolly Architects, who've worked on it with us. We, we have done everything that we think we possibly know how to do, and gotten good advice from the City of St. Petersburg, some of the folks, uh, in the area.
Any efforts up in North County, uh, in the future, perhaps?
We can certainly consider that. We were, we were focused, um, you know, um, because we're getting ready to do the midtown project, and so we were, um, trying to generate some interest in that area, not only for this project, for the RFQ we have out, but also, um, you will see us moving in the direction of wanting to hire a contractor for that project, and this was generating interest towards doing that also.
Mr. Gibbons.
Mr. Chad, thank you. Ms. Wright, I think you've done a lot of stuff, but was Louis Moore from the city included in those discussions? 'Cause Louis has, I've talked to him, he's the purchasing director for the city, and he has some language that he thinks that would help you all when we start to go out to bid for these jobs, that would, uh, make sure that we have the proper amount of minority contractors. Um, he has some very specific language that the city has utilized in the past, so-
I, I know Louis, he was, to my knowledge, Louis wasn't included specifically with us, but Shermiti and her group, um, have Louis involved in their process.
He didn't seem to know anything about it.
Okay.
But he has the language, and I've talked to him several times about the language, and he's more than happy to share it.
Okay, I'll be happy to find out, no problem.
Thank you for your efforts in this area.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the motion? Any discussion? Mr. Burke?
Just help me along here on, on the Item G-two and three. Are we gonna hear presentations, or should I ask a question now?
No, the motion was through G-one.
G-one, okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now on to Item G-two. We have a, uh, finance report. Dr. Duncan?
I gave, I abbreviated a little bit this morning, given the length of the, the budget presentation. We, um, we're seeing a continuation of the trend that I've been talking about over the last few months, a little bit downward trend on revenue. We're still down about three percent, uh, overall. We have noticed this month a little bit of a trending down on the summer tuition, uh, that, we'll show you that next month, but we also are seeing that from other colleges as well. Our year-over-year tuition revenue is up, uh, one point five million year-over-year. We obviously expected that to be higher, but, but we are still in a positive, uh, revenue position there. The, the one thing that we've seen continue to, to drop, mostly because we've reduced fees or eliminated lab fees, is, uh, the downward trend, about a half a million, and which you'll see has been adjusted in our, uh, twelve, thirteen budget recommendation. Right now, the expenses are still trending in parallel to where they've been for the last couple of months, and, uh, our surplus is, uh, right around six point four million. So with that, we're seeing that will, I'm feeling a little better than, than a couple of months ago, as far as where I think we'll end the year, but we are looking very closely at spending over the last three months to, uh, not do any real high year-end spending that would maybe pop that up where we don't want it to be, so. Uh, any questions?
Uh, I have a quick question. On the, uh, the decrease in revenue, are you able to pinpoint exactly what that is year-over-year?
Well, most, up to this point, through the spring, most of it was the, the decline in, uh, the enrollment for the spring.
Oh, okay.
Now, just for last month, that is more of a timing issue, because if you, if you look on the detail for month over month, you'll see that it was actually the state revenue that was down a little bit, but that's timing because we received some revenue last year earlier than we will receive it this year. We expect to make that up either next month or the next month.
Okay.
The driving issue is softer enrollment than we had anticipated, okay?
And what's, to, uh, can you, can you tell me how many students were off? I mean, that's kinda what I'm looking for.
I, I could go back in and look at that, but there were two or three major things that we did. First of all, um, I, I think financial aid is starting to plane over a little bit. I think students are not borrowing as much money to take as many ca- courses, that's one. Two, uh, when I've looked in there, I think people who are out of work and have been out of work are saying, I'm tapped out, I, I can't keep paying tuition, I have to find another way to do it, that's two. Third, we clamped down on some of the financial aid processes, so we made, uh, we limited, uh, students' ability to expand their financial aid, and, and we caused that to happen because we thought that was in the best interest of students. So it's a, a compendium of two or three things that, uh, we still thought we would be okay, but as it proved to be, we're, we're down about, um, three or four percent in enrollment.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure I followed everything, so I just wanna, I wanna make sure I get feedback.
But I'll, I'll try and get with real data.
So, were you saying that one hundred percent of our issues with credit hours has to do with, you can tie directly to changes in the way in which financial aid is, uh, being accessed?
I, if you'll give me just a little, maybe not a hundred percent, but darn close to it, that, that is the driver for student enrollment.
Mm-hmm. Well, then that probably won't change anytime soon.
No, but we can plan it better. In fact, the, the, and one last piece, the softness that you hear in the summer is for a change in the federal financial aid. Last year, students could get all the financial aid they wanted for summer, that's not the case this summer. So we're already seeing a softening of student enrollment because they, when they get to the end of their financial aid, they're done. So maybe that covers one course, maybe two courses in the summer. Last summer, it covered all they wanted to. They had a, a special feature last summer that, uh, got pulled back early in the fall.
But these numbers do not reflect any of that softness. This has to do simply with the spring.
No, no, it would include the, don't forget, we collect the revenue for, for this year, up to July, uh, June thirtieth, so the, the summer session starts early in May. So yes, we are seeing some of that-
Oh, okay.
-as part of the, the early part. Now, yeah, I'm sorry, in your financial report, it, it would be the very first blush of it, but we're concerned about this, a little further softening to come.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you'll see a little bit more of that next month, the next month's report. Good.
Okay.
Okay. Want to just move on to the, the budget development workshop? I've got some help with this. You all recall, a couple of months ago, we, we gave an earlier presentation about the process that we would go through, that we had asked for, uh, members of the college community, managers, budget supervisors, so on, to make budget requests, and we, we had probably over a hundred of those requests since then, and, and watched them all, in fact, they're on video, I believe, out on the, the Board site. Since, since those were made, our three strategic committees, our, our academic, our student, and then our system support, administrative, uh, support, strategic committees, then vetted those, those requests, and prioritized them, basically, and then sent those priorities on to the Strategic Issues Committee, uh, which is what we used to call maybe the President's Cabinet, but, uh, a little different makeup. But, uh, that group then vetted the priorities from the three groups, and hence the recommendations that you will see today are what came out of that. I have to compliment, everybody did a great job. Um, the, the downside is, we certainly had way more requests than we did money, so you'll, you'll see, uh, most of those requests, um, tying into what we're gonna show you. The, um, the, the, a little bit different this year, you're gonna see in your, what we put on your computer and on the website, is that we have a much more consolidated budget, it has every detail of the budget, it is down to the line item level, which last year was in multiple different spreadsheets, and we will be happy, uh, between now and next month when we bring the final, to, uh, answer any questions or meet with you individually to go over those. Uh, the other thing a little different this year is that we, we've linked our revenue and our enrollment projections directly to the guaranteed schedule, and we're gonna explain a little bit from that. And you will see, again, in that present, in the information provided to you, that all of the line item detail rolls up into those summary sheets that we each, I believe we each handed you a packet that had that, that information. Ann's gonna, Dr. Cooper's gonna speak to you a little bit about the-
One of the things that we did in an attempt to come up with a projection for next year's enrollment is we took last year's enrollment and looked also at what's called equated credit hours, which is essentially faculty workload, to allow us to project the planned enrollment for next year. And the way in which equated credit hours works is that we look at the faculty's contact time, depending upon the type of class that they're teaching, and so we just wanted to give you a few examples. So for a lecture class that has, uh, three credit hours for the student, uh, it, it requires three contact hours during the week, and the equated credit hours then is three. So that's pretty straightforward. In natural science, or some of our health science labs, a course may only have one credit hour for the student, but it requires two to three contact hours, so then the equated credit hours, or the faculty workload, can be from one point five to two point two five. With the art studio courses that are three credit hours for the student, they require six contact hours a week, and the equated credit hours then is three point seven five. So some sample faculty-based workloads, if they were doing four of the art studio courses, that would give them their fifteen ECH. Uh, five lecture courses, uh, would give them their fifteen ECH, or if they had two science lectures, and then four of the science labs at the two point two five, that equates with the fifteen ECH. And we have faculty on either a thirty-six ECH contract or a forty-two, where they teach fifteen semester hours, fall and spring, and then six in the summer on the thirty-six ECH contract, but twelve in the summer if they're on the forty-two. Any questions?
I've asked Ann to go through this. This is the metric that we are trying to drive forward to, to marry both offerings and faculty effort and cost, okay? So if we take, you'll see us take the, a number of student semester hours taught per, essentially, a unit of faculty effort, and then we can measure that across any number of disciplines, use that as a predictor for how many faculty resources we need, uh, without diluting- use that as a predictor for how many faculty resources we need, without diluting and faculty teaching fewer and fewer credit hours. So a little bit of a different shift for us, but a much more straightforward metric, okay? For us, we talk all the time about ECH. It's a measure of a faculty member's load. It's an inside game kind of thing. Just wanted you to understand, that's one part. That will be the denominator. The amount of student credit hours per that is then produces a measure, and you'll see us use that as projecting our cost for teaching.
Thank you.
Can you walk me through again how you come up with an equated credit hour and ECH? All right, so if we have a course where a professor teaches three hours a week, and then you figure out how much contact time, can you walk me through this real quick?
Sure. Okay. The lecture course is three contact hours a week, and that equates to three ECH, or workload of three, for the faculty member.
So if you'll look at an art studio course, Mr. North, where their commitment is three credit hours, but the course is six hours a week in the lab, that would then be -- if you had a full load of those, you would teach four of those in a full load, so that the hours get -- don't determine it, the credit hours, mixed with the hours determine. So four courses at 3.375 would get you 15 ECH. You would teach four of those courses. You'd be on the clock for 24 hours rather than 15 hours, okay?
And the reason why --
Let me start again. If you teach History 101, three credits, three contacts, standard load is five of those, okay? If you teach an art course, you have three credits, six contact hours a week. How do we norm back for that? We create an equated credit hour. If that's all you have in your load, you'll need to teach four of those to make a full load. So you divide 15 by four, you get 3.375.
So what I -- I think one of my questions is, how do you determine the contact hours? In other words, why would you assume that an art class would have more contact hours than a lecture, a history lesson, a lecture?
That may -- it's a little bit -- that may be more of a historical-pedagogical thing. You can't do it in three hours a week. You need to spend more time in the lab to do the artwork. Or a science lab would be a good example, okay? You have a lecture component, but then the lab component generally requires more time during the week. So to norm for that commitment of additional time, you just norm the faculty member's load back to that issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Law, is this a recognized program throughout the state of Florida?
No. People do it in different ways. This one, we've been doing back for many years here, okay? I have some ownership in its genesis back in the '80s. But again, it was a normal way to say, how do you measure comparability across different kinds of faculty loads? How do you say an art teacher and a history teacher are essentially teaching at some level of comparability? And we did a very detailed study of faculty loads and course weightings, and came up with a recognized system that just loads in. It's been in place for a long time. You can tinker it a little bit, but everybody does it in a different way.
Does everyone get -- I guess I'm concerned, especially with the scrutiny that seems higher ed's under more today from policymakers than maybe was in the past, is this -- you know, has the council president discussed this, and is contact hours a fairly -- you know, it may be a different method to get here, but is these contact hours, is that pretty well-recognized throughout the state? So we're not an outlier compared to other 28?
Those would be -- the contact hours would be, as part of the common course numbering. I mean, if you're going to have a science course, it's going to have this type of contact hours. So that comparability is statewide. What you decide to call that in a faculty member's load is a local determination, okay? I would guess we could find somewhere where people value that higher. You might only teach three of those as a full-time load, as a possibility. I mean, but that's not the issue. This is a very efficient system that we have for teaching and getting a full faculty member's load. I mean, we do that. The total hours for the course is, in fact, a statewide issue. How you value that in a faculty member's load is a local determination.
The deans have been working for quite some time now on developing next year's schedule for the fall, spring, and summer, and we refer to that as the guaranteed schedule. That schedule, of course, has a defined number of seats in it, courses, so on. And we then use that against last year's enrollment, then to project what our planned enrollment would be in our budget for next year. Essentially, we took the actual enrollment for the 11-12 year, and we divided that by the actual equated credit hours, and that simply gave us what we call a performance factor. It was the lower division was 7.4, and upper division was about 5.9. And then we applied that against the guaranteed schedule. So we simply took those performance factors, multiplied them times the ECH that is defined in the guaranteed schedule for next year, and which then gave us our planned enrollment. We did have to convert it to what's called student semester hours, because that's how we calculate the revenue. But you can see at the bottom there, the lower division, the planned enrollment calculated to about 620,000 SSH, and the upper division, about seven -- a little over 75,500 SSH.
So we started by saying, what's the schedule we need to meet student demand? How much effort does it take to deliver that schedule? What then should we project as the enrollment for that schedule? And marry those two items together, so that there's no downward pressure on enrollment. In fact, there's just upward opportunity for that enrollment to take place. But the schedule is -- there's an efficiency measure for the schedule. When somebody says, "We need 10 sections of English," we can say, "Are you planning, then, to have this much enrollment for those 10 sections?" And it's a good way for us at the -- who have to put the budget together, to feel like the front line is aligned with our budget planning.
Let's look at how those SSH then converted to the actual revenue numbers.
There was a question -- go back if you would, okay? Just one other nuance, and it came up, Mr. Burke, in the question that you had. Open campus, those are the courses, the high school dual enrollment courses, okay?
I didn't know what OC was.
Those are -- there is no -- the only thing we plan is how many sections of that. They handle how many students. We get no tuition from it. We get no state reimbursement for it. I want to bring that back later on as a growing budget problem, but at the same time, it doesn't drive the budget for us. Since we don't collect any tuition, we don't want to plan those sections in the overall offerings.
We started with to look at what our tuition budget was for this current fiscal year. And we started the year at about 61.8 million dollar projection, and you may recall, that was based on a 5% enrollment increase. When we took the numbers I just showed you and calculated our tuition projection, we did it without any tuition increase to see how it would compare. So making that calculation, we would project our revenue to be about $59,800,000 next year. Now, and you can see, that's a million or so lower, a couple of million lower than what we projected last year. If we apply the 5% tuition increase that has been recommended, and I believe is still on the governor's desk, then that would result in a projection of about 62.8 million, which would be about a million dollar revenue increase over last year. Now, we had a lot of discussion on this, and there's a little uncertainty right now with where enrollment is going. So we looked at the 62.8 million dollar number and said, "Let's err on the side of being conservative." And we put it -- developed a 2% reserve factor, that when we drop that number down 2%, our actual budget is now based on 61.8 million, which is essentially neutral over last year. It's a $26,000 increase, but fairly minimal in the overall picture. So then, we had to then fund our five major strategic priorities. And as I said, we had many, many requests: student support, instructional program improvements, faculty and staff development, K-12 community outreach, and improved process and technology support. We had all these requests, and we sort of vetted the priorities, and we then had to say, "We're only projecting about $25,000 in just tuition, so where can we identify other sources of revenue within our existing funds to help fund where we want to go with our strategic plan?" We -- I'm going to go to what Dr. Law has said. Mr. Burke?
Okay, I just want to understand this tuition. Last year, what was the cap that we could raise tuition?
8%.
And didn't we go 6?
Yes.
So do we still have that ability, if the governor were to veto the 5%, that we could still increase 2%? Don't we still have that cap?
Yes, sir. And we would have a 3% inflation factor available to us. I -- yes.
I mean, I just want to know our options. I'm not saying we're going to do that.
We have -- yes, the board has those options. As much as I've tried to give us that capacity for us to make those choices, I think if we confronted the public policy that way, I would not feel comfortable recommending that as a confrontational issue.
But we still --
We still have a capacity, yes. We are below the maximum.
Do we know how many of the 28 raised tuition to the full 8% last year?
I believe everyone did. I am -- I think everybody did.
Okay.
So next, we identified sources of revenue to fund the plan. I think you'll find that this is very consistent with Dr. Law's philosophy, that you fund your values. And so we went back through our budget and identified some sources. One, we've got about $535,000 in tuition and fees. Not only about $25,000 is just new tuition, but we have other distance fees, technology fees, so on. We gained about $273,000 in our state appropriations. Most of that is, well, it's primarily lottery money. We received about $400,000, a little over $400,000 in operating costs and new facilities. And if one recommendation in this budget is another recommendation that I believe is still pending in Tallahassee, and that is to increase our authority to raise our capital improvement fee by -- we can't go beyond $2 right now. And so that $2 would generate another 1.3 million in capital improvement fee revenue. So that was a significant number. Also factored in the decrease in lab fee revenue, just to offset.
I'm sorry, what's our current -- 2 is the max. What's the current that we're charging?
Well, 2 is the maximum. We can go up.
Can they -- you can charge up to 10% of your tuition cost can be a capital improvement fee. The legislation said that, over time, can rise to 20%, but no more than $2 a year as you walk up the ladder, okay?
$2 increments?
$2 increments would be the maximum that you could do. So somebody call up the exact amount. I would guess our capital improvement fee is in the $5, $6 range. Is that --
And what percentage of that now?
10% of the existing tuition level, okay? So tuition is right at $75.
And 10 was the maximum?
Yes, sir.
There is a breakout in your -- the electronic file we provided to you that has all of the fees broken out individually.
In fact, I think we have -- well, we won't go down that trail, but yes, you have all of that. And this was, again, a way for the legislature to say, "We understand that we're not funding your renovation repair monies." And my recommendation, as we evaluate this, will be for us to put that into long-term facilities, repair, replacement, a roofing plan that lasts for five years. Let's invest it so that it provides benefits over 15 or 20 years, rather than --
This is the new PICO, basically, right?
This is it. You're looking at where they're headed.
Right. We also looked at areas where we could reduce and/or reallocate funds. A big one is, if we go with the 1.3 million on the capital improvement fees, we could reallocate about 620,000 of network infrastructure at the sites to be funded from the capital improvement fee, which would free up that money in the Fund I budget. We also identified a little over $800,000 of just vacant budgeted positions that we could look to reallocate. We also have last year's one-time capital equipment budget, about $900,000 that we can reallocate. We freed up about $255,000 of general expense. We also had last year's contingency that we did not spend, but we carried that forward to reallocate. We also have some -- just a pot of unspent capital improvement fees that we expect to carry forward, about half a million. We reduced the lab fee expense, which freed that up about $330,000. And our property casualty costs are going down, and our -- we actually had a large recurring fund for disaster recovery, that if we had a disaster, we anticipate we'd probably use cash to deal with that, so we reduced that about $350,000. Bottom line is, it gave us about $9.7 million of total funds that we could then use to fund the plan and our strategic priorities. The first thing we had to take off of that $9.7 million was fixed cost increases. The biggest one, of course, was the health plan. We just had our plan, our actuarial analysis done, and our actuary recommended that you should adjust about $1 million for next year. About 200,000 of that is new positions, the new faculty positions we added. And we can break that out into whatever level of detail you'd like to see. This is a little bit of a gray area. We're just finishing up the career salary structure review, so we set aside $400,000. We're not sure what the actual number will be, but that number was set aside.
I need to be really careful here, though. That is a competitiveness adjustment. We have, as we -- we will bring you next month, the market analysis of where our positions sort out. And if we are non-competitive in some areas, I'm going to recommend that we become competitive. This is not a general salary increase, however.
Right. We also projected about $127,000 additional budget for adjunct instruction. That does not include the increase in the open campus allocation. You'll see that later on in the presentation. And then we allocated about another $150,000 for just facility cost increases that are fixed. That then left us with about $7.8 million to apply to the strategic objectives, and we're going to run through those quickly, and I'll turn it over to Tom. I'm just going to run through those.
For student support, which is an area that we're very passionate about right now, you'll find that we have a couple of things going on in the new budget year. One is, we're going to enhance our frontline staff. You can see 510K there for our frontline staff on all of our campuses, to help support students on the front end, bringing them into college in the best possible condition for learning. Second, are our technology enhancements. One is the early alert. This is the one we talked about earlier, for faculty to let staff know how students are progressing and whether or not they need help. Third --
Is the student services mobile apps. And so we want to put $70,000 towards building some applications for cell phones and for iPads to help students with registration and student service access. Also, $350,000 for wireless LAN expansion. So that's making our system speed faster, and also expanding the bandwidth that we have out on the campuses, so that the students and the faculty can actually get online faster and better than what they're doing right now.
Then next would be the enhancements to the student portal. We need to have some consultants come in and help us with all of the planning and getting that done for programming. And last, on the student support, would be the $21,000 for admissions transfer evaluation system to help the deans and frontline staff with students who walk in with transcripts, so they'll be able to help them, let them know what coursework they need to take, without having to wait and submit it and then come back later to register. Those are the student support budget issues.
I have some questions on those. Are you finished with this yet?
Yes.
With this line? Okay. On the frontline services support, this is to support the SENS survey, right? So you actually have a budget that's put together to address where we --
That is correct.
Okay. And is most of this $510,000 is a payroll?
Yes.
So you're hiring new staff to do what?
Some are hired, new staff, and some are movements of the deck chairs. So a few others.
We have five new positions, one on each campus, advisors, and then five are redeployed from central administration or other functions, okay? So that we are very narrow in advisors and counselors.
And then the technology enhancements, this early alert, this is so that professors can do what? They can call and -- I mean, I assume they could pick up the phone right now and call the dean. You're going to spend $150,000 and do what?
Well, actually, it's more than just early alert. It is the system that we will use to help us with career development questions and working with students. It will also help us with retention initiatives above and beyond, but with -- But with early alert, it provides a communication between the faculty, the staff and the student. So everyone's on the same page and understanding what took place with that student, how are we supporting that student? What are the expectations as a result of the early alert? Did they go to the tutoring lab, et cetera? So it will help us coordinate those efforts and maintain the records and information so everyone will know what's happening with that student.
The faculty member would go to their, their course list, their, their course roster after they've made effort to communicate with students, they can't find them. They click a button, that triggers a response by the advisors. It triggers a response now that we have a call follow-up so that it's a 911 then for us to reach out for that student before they, all is lost. Okay? Then it documents that system as to how that call was made, what was the follow-up that we can start to measure. We're trying to take a very informal system and put some structure on it so that it's a much more formal, much more responsive system.
Yeah, but see, what I don't understand is why would that cost 150? Because you have an email system today, right? So, I mean, in a cost-conscious world, you're just looking at way, if you're allocating funds appropriately. So if you have an email system today, why can't the professor simply email the advisors and say, look, this kid's got a problem?
We can do that. We're, we're trying to, I think for 20 or 30,000 of that, we were able to buy a much more comprehensive system that triggered an email to the student, triggered an email to the advisor, triggered an email to, if they have a financial aid issue. Again, it's just a more comprehensive system rather than counting on everybody to do the right thing at the right moment in, in a complex world.
My understanding is that the, the tech not, it's not just the technology, it's the tracking and the data that is supported by the technology that is most important, right? So the tracking mechanism, which allows for Dr. Williams or you or whoever else to say, you know, when the, say it's a 19-year-old student and the parent then wants to come in and say, why is my daughter not in school? Well, here are all of the steps that we've taken to try to keep your daughter in school. And that's what I think this system provides. Am I correct, correct in that, Dr. Law?
Yeah. Essentially, it creates a case management issue right away. If I pick up the phone and call an advisor, I don't know which advisor to call for this student. I don't know then how to do it if I, if I do an email. So yes, we can do that, but we're trying to do it in much more of a case management. If a student's having trouble in one class, we're probably going to see trouble in more than one class. So we're trying to get it to where it's a managed case management system so that it's, it's again, more, more structured rather than more informal. The other piece is in fact though, and I think we lump things for the purpose of this discussion, but another part of that is the intake process that has to do with the career centers as well. So that's the same kind of thing. As we bring students in the front door, we, we do a lot of online stuff, tell us a little bit about yourself, that kind of thing. Then if they indicate early on that they don't have a career plan or that they're concerned about that, once again, it branches it off to try to make a case management. So we now have a comprehensive listing of students who we ask, do you know where you're headed? They say no. We then have a comprehensive listing where we can then take the next step to follow up with each of those, pass those on to the career counselors, let them make individual contacts with all of those students. So again, it's, the, the pieces are in place, but there's no systematic approach to this. And that's what we're trying to overlay right now.
The intent there is to bring that undeclared part way down to almost a nothing number. Is that correct?
That's, we think that's one of the keys, is when a student doesn't know why they're here. And we don't know when to ask that question. We're not asking that question. We don't know that for a fact. In fact, we, we hide it because we tell a student, if you want financial aid, you have to declare a major. So a student declares a major, that just gets them into the financial aid system rather than say, that's what I don't know. Over here, we can say, where are you headed? What do you want? What's your career plan? If they say, I don't know, it hasn't damaged their financial aid, they can still be an AA student or an AS student. But at the same time, then we're focused on them to say, let's get you in for a counseling interview. Let's do some follow-up work with you. And that listing is what's missing for us now. We don't know who those students are.
So the wireless expansion, you're going to pay 350,000 to have a faster network?
Our, our current wireless system was developed probably six or seven years ago and it was very bare bones. It was intended not to really serve for registration purposes and it wasn't geared around effective student services. It more, it was more, just like very, the, the coverage is very minimal. The actual, the speed of it is very minimal. The first, what we are doing right now is we're putting new fiber in all the buildings, which will drastically increase that speed, which then in turn, when we put, expand the wireless network, it will then in turn increase the, the speed of that. But with, as many students now, when they register, they're using their phone, they're used, so we feel like we really need to have a beefed up wireless network at our college to serve that purpose for both instructional and student service purposes.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. The 100,000 for enhanced student portal learning program graduation, you said this is to hire consultants to do what?
Well, it's programming. We just had to supplement our programming staff. We've tried to keep our programming staff to kind of a core group and then when we hit these peaks of bigger projects, we use consultants to supplement that instead of hiring more full-time programmers.
Okay. So when you look at the student support, the college experience, half of the money is going to five positions and then half the money is going for IT? Is that, I mean, is that how this is breaking out? Am I reading this right?
Right.
All right. And the five, so we have hired five positions and they're going to be approximately 80,000 to 90,000 a year?
Well, five of those are new. The other five are reallocations of positions. So the total is 500,000, but it's actually a total of 10.
It, it'll be $45,000 positions with 30% overhead, Mr. North. So those are sort of entry-level counselor-type positions. We had planned about 60,000 as the, the total for each of those positions. Five new, five redeployed when we actually started redeploying and came in a little under 600,000.
Okay. Do you have someone, Dr. Law, who can, who works with you on IT decisions? Do you have like a, someone here at the college or do you have an employee or a-
We have, we have our own IT staff, but I would say we just, we hire periodically consultants do that. We just had Microsoft in to give us a, a soup to nuts review because we felt like our, the whole was less than the sum of the parts. You, you build it over a period of time and you wake up one day and you don't feel like you're getting the whole deal. So we just brought in some national folks from Microsoft to, to look over our shoulder. We're, we're pretty mindful of that, but we're open to any suggestions. I know you're-